Show here tonight, or is it, uh, is it something? Okay.
I think so. I can't, I can't, you know.
No problem.
You would think the technical director would have complete control. I might be sure he would have.
Otherwise, right.
Is this analog projector or digital? Oh. HDTV. They seem to do, uh, first. And it's just. So, uh, who is someone, you know, the new, uh, captain of the building. Another, another. I'm just engineering. He goes, I'm in a year or so. We consider him a boss.
Uh, probably either Sandy Breentholz or Harstamson or someone else.
Someone else. You won't see that.
Really?
Yeah.
Sandy has to know about that, right?
Does the server present it or for a special machine?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, if you can find the name, let us know.
I'll get it right up here. Just looking for him. So far in the future, it's like.
I don't know. You wanna come on up? Panel member?
I need to be up.
Yeah. Right in the center. Is your voice hoarse already from doing, what, three days of workshops?
Do I get a free water bottle?
Yes. Fresh water.
That's what we do.
We're doing one of those rooms.
That's right.
That's an interesting home for a cowboy.
Alright, so got everybody, but we're missing the diaper man, right?
Diaper man.
Eric.
The diaper man.
He's still in the bathroom. Oh, here we go.
Who is it?
Um, John Keatsley. John Keatsley Space Agent. He's here, yeah. Uh, model-based systems engineering. Issue of insight. So far in the future, it really hasn't returned to me.
Oh, okay, yeah, he was upstairs at our, uh, model management.
Yeah, he wasn't mentioned in this year.
Surprise to me, so.
Now's the time for him to like.
Go ahead, okay, go ahead. Yeah, you know, we get started, go ahead, just come up behind me.
Uh, let's see, what year is that? Pinky, fifty. Actually, may end up being Bill Gilmore's. For now.
You're, you're it too, okay. Yeah, he is. He's the guy, I think, that runs around with, what is it, the red, red, um, slot Levi's on, or? Yeah, right, yeah. He's definitely noticeable when he wears his.
I'm pretty much. I'm very. So how much, uh, system engineering is, uh? It's pretty popular now in here, and your clients here.
No, SGP.
I share there. We're going over there. Yeah.
Well, I guess, why don't we go ahead and, um, we'll get started, uh, 'cause I know we're between, uh, between you and dinner right now, so. Or, or drinks, or durs, or whatever, too, so, let me just go ahead and get started. Um, so, welcome, uh, town hall on, uh, digital system engineering, also known as bu- model-based system engineering. So that'll be interesting moving forward, how we, uh, uh, balance the two, uh, acronyms there. Uh, so I'm Ron Mil- Williamson, I'll be the facilitator, uh, today, to help out. Uh, I'm from Raytheon, also an adjunct at Loyola Marymount University, uh, helping to teach some of the, uh, model-based system engineering and architecting work at the graduate school over there, too. Um, I have some panel members here, um, I'll put the, uh, the list of names up here in just a minute, and I'll, uh, I'll let you guys introduce yourselves when we get, uh, get to it, so. The agenda, what I thought we would have today, that we all discussed, is, um, I'll give some, uh, a bit of an overview of what we're doing within, um, INCOZI on the Model-Based System Engineering Initiative. Uh, so give you some of the, uh, the roadmap, um, what our, what our vision is. Um, I didn't put up Hans's, uh, Google Earth, uh, uh, visualization here, too, but I think that's a great, that's something we could all go away with. Maybe next year, we'll have the, the Google Engineering, uh, data equivalent to that, that we can zoom into, you know, who knows? We'll see where we go on that. Um, and then there was a couple of questions that were, uh, that were coming up, uh, basically related to what all is going on in, in all our organizations related to digital system engineering, model-based system engineering, um, and what challenges are we, are we facing? Um, and so before we get into that, what I'll do is I'll, I'll give a summary of, of some of the challenges from the workshop that they, we had this, uh, this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, and, and today. There were some, um, uh, breakout sessions, talking about model management, a variety of other topics as, as well. Um, and so I'll give a summary of some of that, too. Then, uh, what I'd like to do is start out with, uh, each of the panel members representing various parts of, uh, of industry. Uh, we were joking in the, um, in the breakout sessions that we were talking about diapers, uh, to tractors, to aircraft, to spacecraft, right, in terms of where does model-based system engineering practices apply? So hopefully, our, our diaper man will come, and you'll hear about the diaper story as well. Um, and then I wanted to, we wanted to go through the panel members and then open it up to the audience to find out from yourselves, you know, what is going on, any, um, any stories, any war stories, any good stories, any success, uh, stories going on in your organizations as well, and, and open that up. And then I'll finalize with a, uh, a couple of slides and a couple of words is, uh, if you haven't been engaged with the model-based system engineering efforts within INCOZI or, or, or beyond, um, I'll give you some pointers where to go to. I think we have a really, really nice, uh, wiki page with lots of links, and it describes all the work that we're, uh, we're going through. So I'll summarize that as well. So with no further ado, let me just, uh, jump right on into it then. So the participants, I already introduced myself a little bit, uh, for the panel members. Uh, Eric's not, uh, not here right now, but we have Harold from, uh, from Airbus, Amit from, uh, IBM, George from Ford, and then Roger from, uh, John Deere. So I think we've got a nice, uh, ah, can I still call you the diaper man? No? Alright, okay, alright. Yeah, please, go ahead, take a seat. And last but not least, Eric from Proctor and Gamble. Okay, so I just introduced what we were doing, we'll, uh, go through, I'll, I'll make some introductory slides and then go to the panel members as well. So, as, as a good engineer, need to get to definitions, so this is the definition right out of the, uh, INCOZI System Engineering Vision 2020, as you see. If you can't see it in the back, let me read it just quickly for you. Model-based system engineering is the formalized application of modeling to support systems requirements, so think the whole lifecycle. System requirements, design, analysis, verification, validation activities, beginning in conceptual design way at the front-end phase and continuing throughout the, the, the development of later lifecycle phases into sustainment and retirement, et cetera, as well. So full lifecycle, that's, that's our charter, basically. The one, I guess, theme that we're trying to get to, and our, our vision here is that model-based system engineering is simply systems engineering, right? And our, and I think our hope is, maybe it's not Sandy or Mark's hope, is that in a few years here, I don't know how many years, that there'll be no need for an MBSC initiative, because it'll be embedded in all the system, system engineering activities that we, uh, that we're doing, um, in the industry and also within, within INCOZI. And, and then people would say, well, uh, well, of course, we're doing model-based systems engineering and all the work that we're doing. There'll be no question of that as well. Yeah, sort of like our, our secretaries these days, I think there's no, no, no question that they're using, uh, beyond word processing, they have a PC on their desktop top, right? There's no question that would they go back to us, IBM Selectric Typewriter? I don't even know if IBM makes them anymore, right? They're probably in some museums someplace as well, so that, that kind of equivalent, right? Except for the Russians here, right? Sounds good. Um, so there's a nice, um, and so, to put MBSC and digital systems engineering in context, think digital engineering, model-based engineering in the broader context, of which system engineering is one, we think, important discipline within that, uh, uh, that overall set, set of discipline, engineering discipline itself. So there's a, a great report, if you haven't read it, you can, you can Google it, uh, NDI, MBE Final Report, and you'll get, uh, get right to it, it's open in the public domain, um, from the National Defense and Industry Association. A group of folks got together and put a plan as to, you know, what the, what the model-based engineering-to-be state should, should be. So I, I put a caveat on this one, that it's, it's definitely, uh, US DOD-centric. Um, uh, the critique we had over in the workshop was it doesn't really necessarily apply to the commercial world in terms of the way commercial world works, but definitely from a government agency, Defense Department agency, it works too. Uh, as you may see on the left-hand side, it starts out with, um, uh, what they call pre-milestone A, a kind of conceptual phase, and goes through the lifecycle to operations support, sustainment, um, and retirement as well. So the vision here from an MBE perspective is, is a collaborative, concurrent engineering approach, integrated product team, if you will, approach to, uh, to engineering. As you can see, we have our, our systems engineering representative, hardware, software, and CM, customers involved, logistics, et cetera. Um, and instead of building up, uh, paper, um, and text, and, and tabular descriptions of what we're doing, we build up the, uh, the technical, um, database, a model-based technical database, as we move along from one phase to another. That technical ba- database is used in, uh, as, as input to the subsequent phases. That builds on the model, adds to higher-level abstractions, drills down, does trade studies, et cetera, and gets to building out the model to get to a, an actual end solution. It uses the same data to operate, to maintain, to, to integrate, to, to verify, validate the data as well, um, and finally builds up a master, uh, uh, model data, model-based database, and then finally, we get to the end product as well, right? So that's, that's kind of the story. And along the way, we're building up this, as we do today, in the, in our PDM, PLM systems, a, uh, a technical, uh, data set, but in this sense, we're structuring it, making it into a model-based, um, structured view as well. In addition to that, there's a collaborative aspect to this, where the models can support the engineering teams collaborating with customers, with teammates, with suppliers, et cetera, and it's all through this digital environment. Okay? So that's kind of the vision for the overall MBE-type, type vision, digital engineering, and where systems, uh, model-based systems engineering, digital system engineering fits into that as well. Okay? Probably the reasons. Um, this has been around for quite a while now, uh, this is the roadmap for the INCOZI MBSC initiative as well, starting out at least, uh, 2010 here, maybe, maybe before that. Started out with looking at some of the emerging standards associated with model-based system engineering, maturing the me- the methods and metrics, and working with, uh, end-users, with, uh, most of the vendors, suppliers, from a model-based perspective as well. Moving up the abstraction layer into architecture-based modeling, integrating architecting, system engineering with modeling, simulation, analysis, visualization efforts as well. Um, moving up the abstraction layer in terms of working with, um, different ontologies, taxonomies associated with our engineering discipline, um, and how we map that into a more formal, structured knowledge base that can be used as part of the, uh, the models as well. And then moving on from there and acknowledging that we're increasingly working with more complex systems, working in more of a large, distributed, worldwide, teaming type of an environment, and how do the model structures, um, support that, that type of, uh, process and operation? So what's being done in, uh, in INCOZI? There's a nice, uh, wiki page, like, uh, explained, that's going on out there. Lot of work on the modeling standards, uh, languages, um, CSML, some of the architecture framework languages, OSLC, Open Services Lifecycle, um, FMI, in terms of how do we exchange model information from one tool to another, from one environment to another, from one hub to another hub, from one data repository to another data or model repository as well. Uh, what are the methods involved? Are they, are they different from what we have in our handbook here for, uh, model-based system engineering and improving those? Tools, okay, well, I was working with tools here, and interoperability of tools. Uh, we have a heavy, uh, university involvement in what we're doing, too, to look at where we are in the state of the ar- uh, state of the art. Um, what is the new research that's coming in to plug some of the gaps? And then also, from an education perspective, we've had several discussions, um, related to, how early should we be teaching our, our, our kids, uh, and the, the young engineers in terms of modeling, model-based system engineering, model engineering in, in, in general? Uh, so we've had several debates on that, too, whether it should these be graduate classes? Should we teach them at the undergraduate level? And then also K through, uh, K through eight. Okay, we've got some great, uh, uh, stories here about some of our kids. I have a, a five-year-old, too, uh, and when she was less than two years old, I, I got her, uh, one of the original iPads. And so here's my eighteen-month-old, two-year-old grabbing my iPad out of my, uh, out of my hand, and it is such an intuitive interface, she was able to browse through it and get things and open things up as an eighteen-month-old, uh, kid, so. Uh, so you can see where the next generation is coming to and what we're, what's coming up behind us here, so. So from university and education, that's an important aspect of what we're doing as well. And then obviously, industry, industry applications as well. The workshop that we had is posted in the wiki that I've shown here. We have several challenge teams, uh, taking and applying some of the, uh, the methods and the principles to specific challenge problems as well. We have activity teams looking at usability, interoperability, some new methods, um, modeling standards, uh, model-based tests, the ontology work, too. My particular area is related to system of systems, enterprise architecting, and how do, what, what does modeling in the digital environment mean for, uh, model-based architectures? Okay? So there's lots of, lots of work going on there. Um, we're also, uh, working with, um, reaching out to the other, all the working groups within INCOZI, um, from an architecture, system of systems, uh, human factors, human system interfaces, uh, uh, you, you name it. Uh, so there's a reach-out program going on there, too. And in the wiki page, we'll see some examples up here of, of some of the current, um, mutual collaborative involvement that's, uh, that's going on, too. Lot of tool vendor, uh, collaboration, too, in terms of tool challenges going on within INCOZI as well. So that's an important effort, is that how do the tools support the model-based efforts or methods that we're, uh, that we're advocating here? And the big issue of tool interoperability, how do we exchange models across environments, across tools, across hubs, et cetera, as well? Um, each year, we've had several MBSC-type events at the, uh, International Work- Workshop, International Symposium as well. So, so today, what we'd like to do is kind of start opening it up and, um, ta- start talking about some of, uh, some of the challenges that we've got, how we're using model-based system engineering in, in our, in our companies, in our universities and environments, too, and what some of the challenges are. Um, so what I'll do is I'll go through and list some of the, the high-level points that we found out from the, from the workshop, and I'd like to go maybe in sequence from diapers to electric cars? Um, and, and talk about that from you guys' perspective as, as well. Sorry, I keep pushing on the diapers, I just can't let go of the diaper thing, so I just.
But if you love your babies.
Yeah, if you love your babies, yes, yeah. Um, so, so part of the things you can perhaps see up here, too, uh, the need for, so how do we infuse model-based methods, approaches, processes, tools, et cetera, into our organizations? Um, and what are some of the challenges here, too? So many of us around, uh, uh, in the audience here are, you know, looking at model-based, seeing how it applies. Um, we need sponsorship and a champion, I think, to, to have the energy to, to deploy that into, into the organizations, too. Doesn't seem to be naturally happening by itself, and so we're seeing, you know, pockets of, uh, innovation, pockets of energy that's pushing this. Um, definitely, the younger engineers, as they come out of school, there's an expectation of having this more rigorous, model-based approach to our, our engineer, engineering as well. Uh, a lot of our executives are asking, okay, what's the business case here? What's the return on investment? If I, if I make an investment here in terms of people, process, technology, tools, et cetera, um, what, what's the return on that investment? How are you going to measure it? And how long is it gonna take to get that investment, right? Ability to, to deploy it on, on ongoing programs as well, right? How do you get past that hurdle of the program manager who is under EVMS pressure and quality pressure and customer pressure, et cetera, et cetera? And say, hey, I've got this great technique here that's gonna solve many of your problems. You just have to invest in it, might take a little longer the first time out, too, so, how, how do we get over that, that hurdle as well? So using pilots and things like that as a mechanism that we're, we're doing. We're also looking at some of the, some of the, the technical challenges. It's not necessarily the most mature, um, uh, capabilities we're talking about right now in terms of scalability and quality and traceability. Um, and so there, there are some technical challenges that we may talk here a little bit about in terms of how do you model the, uh, how do you manage these models as they expand into large, uh, potential, uh, data stores of, uh, of technical information? And how do you distribute that across teams, across the organization as well? So that, that's just some highlights in terms of what, what we see has been going on in terms of trends and some of the challenges that we have, too, so. So perhaps, uh, Eric, would you mind, uh, maybe from your perspective at Dr. Gamble? That would be good.
Challenges?
Yeah. And then what, so what are you doing in your organization in terms of, uh, model-based system engineering? And what are the challenges that you've got, and whatever they may be?
So for us, as I said in my talk yesterday, um, PNG traditionally, you know, we had a traditional systems, our way of doing requirements management, which was simply program managers, task managers, if you will, you know, staying after the, staying after the engineering organization to make sure they did what they were supposed to do. Sort of like a tr- traditional systems engineer, but it wasn't system engineering, it wasn't formal system engineering. Um, turned out to be a lot of people that were, you know, sitting in back room, crossing Ts, dotting Is, um, recording drawings and the like. And again, that, when we made the change to digital systems, there was no way to port that. So, um, and fairly shortly thereafter, we realized that, you know, the organization, we need to somehow reestablish that capability. So we got into systems engineering, and it, when we first looked at system engineering, it was, again, it was, it was too expensive, because it just said, bring the task managers back, you know, um, or like, buy a bunch of them. Um, and we said, that's just not an option for us, um, because of our piece cost. And so, 'cause everything, anytime I add any value or any cost to our total delivered cost, uh, we have finance people that in seconds can tell me what, my impact on the case cost of the product I'm selling. Um, and it's not gonna be a pleasant discussion if it, if, unless I can show, go the other way. So adding people was not an option. Um, yet, what they were finding out is that because they couldn't do a proper job, they couldn't do a system, proper system engineering job, uh, there were inefficiencies in the system, and there were losses, there were, you know, miscues and the like, so they're saying, you know, help, help us install some capability, um, that we can make sure that we get it right the first time. So that's when we introduced model-based system engineering or pattern-based. Uh, in fact, to me, it was pattern-based from, from the get-go. I never knew anything different. And, uh, you will find that our system lends itself to pattern-based system engineering and model-based system engineering. And so, the proposition was be able to do something that allowed us to, um, get the capability to do formal system engineering without an exorbitant cost. And, um, and model-based system engineering has, you know, is getting us very close to that goal today. Um, I still can't get incremental headcount, so I still have to, say, free up some other engineer from a current role and then train them how to do this, cap- train them how to do this. Or I might get a contractor, you know, right now, it's contract support that does most of our system engineering. But if I'm gonna convert my people in my organization, I have to take the existing headcount and convert some of those to systems engineers. Um, it means I don't get to teach them UML, and that my methods are, the methodology we use can't be, can't depend on the fact that I have to use, teach somebody UML or UML or CSML. Uh, I've just gotta give them methodology that they can execute, um, in a faithful system engineering way and deliver the requirements that they need. Sorry, that was a long answer.
So if you could introduce yourself and then, and then go for it.
Sure, I'm Amit Fisher from IBM Software Group, our Russian division. And so as a tool provider, or as someone else called it earlier today, a drug dealer that tried to sell drugs to my customers. And we, 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 we basically see clients from large, uh, variety of, you know, industries, loud, loud spread rooms, so aerospace and defense, automotive, electronics, medical devices, you name it. And I would say, you know, I'll just iterate what I said yesterday in the end of the MBSC discussion. I think we should just ignore the question mark and, and anymore. I mean, there is no question that this is happening and models are taking central piece of what the system engineer is all about. And, you know, people, individuals, manager, executive, who not, who don't get it, will get it, because it's happening. We see the, we see the numbers. And, and we, we, we can have a lot of, you know, theoretical discussion around why this is happening. I mean, what is the meaning of engineering? What is the meaning of being system engineer without doing, you know, very deep engineering analysis? Um, but the reality is that there are two major driving, dri- drivers in, in the market that push for being more rigorous and use more formality. So one is complexity. And we are meeting clients that says, it's not a question of affordability anymore. It's not just, it's just, you know, too expensive. We basically cannot do it anymore. We cannot test all the possible use cases. We cannot get certification unless we're doing something different. So if you go back to, you know, to the EDA days, I mean, yes, people can, you know, draw transistors and create a chip, but if you want to do a chip with thousands, or ten thousand, or million, or one billion of transistor, you must shift to a different approach. Otherwise, you basically, you can put, you know, ten times headcount on, on that problem, it will not be achievable. So that's, that's the major sh- shift that we're seeing from complexity. The second one is, you know, very simple business incentive. I mean, the cost of being right was never greater, and the cost of being wrong was never greater. Adoption of new technology is shifting from, you know, color TV that took, you know, sixty, eighty years to penetrate ninety percent of the US market into cell phone, which take, will take less than three years. Well, you know, eighty, ninety percent of, 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 you know, the, the population that had cellphone will have smart, maybe four years. So smartphones, yeah. So it's, it's an order of magnitude shift to adoption of new technology, and also order of magnitude impact of, you know, recalls or grounded airplanes, of what does it mean to the financial bottom line of companies? So it's both complexity, dramatic business incentive, they said, we are in a tipping point when the old metrics, the old approaches cannot work anymore. And the one who resists are, are, are the one from the past. They will, they will change, and if not today, then tomorrow. And the one who will adopt it faster will have market advantage. So I think INCOZI's organization just need to put the question mark aside and just be very blank about it. This is, this is what we're doing, this is, no, it's not the future, it's the present, and let's try to operate and see what we need to do as a community to, to help all of us beyond the trend.
Hi, I'm Roger Burkhardt, uh, I work at John Deere on, uh, how to apply systems and tools across all of product development. Systems engineering is just one piece of that and still a fairly, uh, small, uh, thin slice. Uh, really, the challenge is how to get the need for systems engineering recognized on top of all the bottom-up engineering, uh, most, all of which is now based on digital methods. We've had, uh, real commitments to virtual product development across the board. Uh, that's, uh, simulation and analysis of the actual physical product, but also its comprehensive use of, uh, models and effect as the source code for all the programmable behavior, the embedded software, uh, real-time control systems. And so that is a huge bottom-up, uh, basis, and systems engineering, uh, we have good recognition, it's needed as the glue to tie all of this range of digital systems engineering together, but it's, uh, not a glue, uh, we're familiar with, I guess, one we're not used to smelling, so. When we do systems engineering, it's going to be model-based, because we wouldn't even think of doing it any other way. It's a clean slate. Uh, I would like to mention a couple of things. One of our newest groups in the MBSC initiative is the joint, uh, agreement between INCOZI and the NAFIMs organization for the Systems Modeling and Simulation, a working group. Uh, Frank Popoulis is in the audience here from Dana Corporation. He's chairing that group from the NAFIM side, but we really do view that as how to give a systems engineering, uh, application context for all of the rest of, uh, this, uh, what consumes most of our computing cycles, actually, uh, simulating, analyzing, predicting very detailed behavior across the whole complex systems. Um, and, uh, I'd also like to, uh, in terms of what's going to be building this recognition that the system engineering layers are necessary in companies like John Deere, is just the exploding content of, uh, uh, programmable embedded capability and also the explosion of new technology alternatives. Uh, one particular piece that, uh, probably would apply at Ford as well, Heinsteiger mentioned in his keynote talk, uh, developments like the AutoZar framework, which really bring, even in the restricted domain of, uh, some of the, uh, electronic and, uh, uh, communication control systems, uh, a true systems engineering architecture of functions that have delayed allocation to the platforms on which they run. So it's, it's happening, and actually, I think those are going to propel us into a much more, uh, much faster accelerating pace of systems engineering. So even though it might appear that some of the commercial sectors, uh, have lagged in the adoption of systems engineering, MBSC may well. adoption of systems engineering, MBSC may well be the way that we leapfrog any of the expectations.
Any, any unique challenges in your industry?
It is, we're getting the, everybody's so buried in their traditional, well, very good capabilities from the bottom up. And so, it's establishing the need and the reserving the time and adoption for the layers that need to be built on top.
Great. All right.
My name is Harald Ismann from Airbus Defense and Space. So, for us, when we started to discuss MBSC in a wider context, so it became pretty obvious on one hand, we see a discipline similar to what Roger said, so we see on all domain disciplines, a lot of models and we see them for years and there's not a big discussion. It's just a natural evolution, which is applied on individual roadmaps per discipline. We discussed systems engineering, so it was just logical to say, well, why shouldn't we do the same on systems engineering? Just let's go for it. But the key point is not to, to create another silo saying, well, that's all the disciplines in here, we have, we have system engineering. So, if we go from model-based system engineering, we have to place it in the context of the other disciplines, establishing the interfaces, making sure that, that everything works together. So, the vision was then, pretty soon, well, we have to go for digital engineering, we have to encompass the complete problem, considering systems engineering or MBSC is masterpiece in order to get the things connected, in order to have the seamless exchange of the data, of the information across disciplines, across the, the life cycle, across the, the customer supply chain, and also more and more across product families to, to have a good process between the, the project and the product behind. In terms of challenges, I think it must be clear, so there is no turning solution right now. So, there's not a single tool out there where you can just say, well, go for it. And some elements were even missing, so this means you have to assemble, configure a couple of different tools, so this means it's certain, but say knowledge, certain mastering, the technologies in order to get the tools running is required, either in-house or you have to go for it with tool vendors or consultants. Second, I think as a challenge is, we have established processes based on documents. And if you go for a model-based process, you, you have to challenge the processes and you see there are a lot of implicit knowledge in those documents in the people minds. So, this means in this transition, you make a, also some sort of a formal, more formal process, you have to be much more clear, what are the artifacts being exchanged, what is the data managed? And this turns to be sometimes be a challenge in order to, to make this straight the first time.
Great, thank you, Harald. George?
So, yeah, so for anyone who doesn't know me, I'm George Wally. I work at Ford Motor Company, technical expert in control systems engineering at Ford, work on hybrid vehicles and a variety of many other things. My role also lets me kind of be an evangelist for things like extending or bringing in descriptive modeling, architectural modeling into, into Ford. Like other people have said, we have, you know, plenty of MBSC, plenty of model-based engineering and model-based system engineering within the companies, but the models might be a drawn picture on a piece of paper or picture of a whiteboard or Visio, PowerPoint diagrams, right? I mean, those are models, they're just not the best ones. It's hard to query them, hard to reuse them, change them. So, that's what those of us, I mean, it's a, it's an exciting time for it. A lot has happened in the past year and we have a lot on our plate with management support this year, mostly through goodwill, through the past good work that we've done, not because they're, they, you know, that they know the value or have seen some sort of ROI statement on what, what they're going to do. So, so it's up to us to, to deliver, you know, exciting results and show it, but, you know, the, the, the place we're in is what I was just describing, the, the, the small community, the small but growing community of people doing S M L modeling, other types of architectural modeling. We're just tired of updating things really slowly. We're tired of having to try to, try to keep up with, not really keep up, but try to keep up with the, the smartphone industry, right? I mean, new phones come out this quickly. Our cars don't come out that quickly with new feature sets, right? And you can try your best to future-proof yourself and try to build in technology capability, but you're not going to keep up with that. I mean, you're, you're, you, you want to do your best, but something new will come in and you have to be able to respond to it, react to it. You have to be able to analyze your interfaces, figure out where you can plug this new technology in or make it compatible. And if you're sifting through 1,000-page Word documents and, you know, again, you know, non-searchable, nonquerable models, it just takes much, much longer, right? And the customers, you typically, a lot, some, I appreciate any of you guys who buy new Ford vehicles or lease them every couple of years, right? But a lot of people, there's a lot of people who don't do that. They either buy an old used vehicle, even I do that. I feel, always feel like I'm a bad Ford employee. I say, buy Ford, but let someone else who doesn't have as much, or has more money buy the new ones and then, you know, buy it a couple of years later when it's cheaper. But, so those of you who buy it new, I thank you and I thank you for leasing them and then I'll buy it right after that. But, because the quality's there, right? But, no, I mean, you know, so a lot of people don't have that and so you're not, you know, the, the customer base would love to be able to, especially with a few-year-old vehicles, would love to be able to incorporate the newer technology and it's, it's just a very big challenge for us to say, yeah, yep, well, backward support, you know, this and this and here's how, here's the cheap solution to upgrade your head unit and things like that. So, but it is an exciting time in, in the past year. I think I presented in the, a few of us presented the other day from Ford, you know, we've been working with companies like InterCax to, in, in building up these S M L models, we want to, we don't want to duplicate the work we're doing, right? We want, we already have requirements in a Siemens PLM system, requirements and, and feature function hierarchies and CAD files and things like that, part assemblies. We want to be able to reuse that. I don't have to, I don't have any time to, to duplicate that, right? And so, we've been able to, you know, work with products through companies like, like InterCax and others to access that data, bring it in, push it back, do comparisons and that's, that's faster. That's faster than what we were doing before. So, that's where we see the excitement. The challenges are going to, again, be able to turn around, you know, results in, in even in this next year to what we're promising to management in a way that is valuable. And as we shared in one of the infusing MBSC in the organization breakout sessions, our experience so far is, is not so much showing the exciting thing, the things that we typically in the MBSC initiative are excited about using the models to do these co-simulations and all sorts of things like that. It's, it's what I've shared before of generating F M E As or seeding F M E A, boring F M E A documents, right? But being able to regenerate it really quickly when, when something, you find an error, you find a new signal. For some reason, that really excites my, excites my chief engineers and my directors that, that I'm not spending a week doing that, right? And, and for good reason. So, it's been an adjustment period trying to figure out how not, how to, how to progress the things I'm excited about, but still be able to deliver the core, you can't, we can't forget the core engineering work products, right? And I think MBSC has an ability to do that in increasing measures, so.
Great, thank you, George. So, maybe I can, I can finish up, so represent Raytheon, part of the aerospace defense industries too. So, it's almost ditto on a lot of the areas that we have too. So, so at Raytheon, we are investing in, in model-based system engineering and model-based engineering. I think we've recognized that we, it's not just the system engineering group too, we have to have this broader vision of digital engineering in general and how systems engineering fits into that and how we can use, if not common tools and the same tools, have tools that can interoperate with each other and share, share model information at various levels of abstraction across our enterprise as well, linking into our existing PDM, PLM type, type systems at, at the enterprise level, but also supporting individual projects in terms of local project hubs that can work on perhaps their own little, own smaller sandbox and still do a model-based approach, but then share that information with the broader enterprise to be able to get some efficiency gains in terms of, instead of building our own model libraries, reaching out to a, a model library repository, dragging and dropping that onto our model-based system engineering desktop and then, and then going very quickly as well. And I think at some of our breakout sessions, we've seen some really good examples of how that is working today. One question about scalability and how to scale it to a larger organization or a larger set of teams, how to distribute it, how to manage it, access control, for example. You know, you don't want to put your model out there and have the whole, even within your own company, share it. There's IP restrictions, obviously you want to, if you're patenting some of the information, you don't want it to go out, you want to control. So, access control, some of the standard things that we have even on the web today is an analogous situation, reaching out to get data on the web, not everything is accessible. Same thing applies in the model-based world too and accessing, accessing that. Some of the challenges we've had too is basically kind of the business as usual type of mind, mindset and trying to breaking, breaking that mindset. An approach we're using is chipping away at it, having pilot programs in each of our, each of our domains showing success in different areas. And that, that, that proves it to the program manager that says, yeah, I can see where you reduced my costs, my schedule, my technical risk on this by applying this set of models, doing trade studies and doing it quickly, right? So that it, it doesn't, it doesn't take as long as the, the length of the development project to build the model and test it out. It's too late by then, right? So, that whole aspect of being agile during your agile and, and model development, we're working on that as well. At the NDIA conference as well, there were several briefings from many industry partners there too. Our Lockheed Martin brethren were, were talking about their, I'm not sure if they've copyrighted it yet or not, but what they're calling their digital tapestry, right? So, it's that visualization of all this digital data weaving together into, into a tapestry as well. And then, then getting to the point, this is the future, maybe it's, is in some of your companies as well, where when you, when you brief it to your customer or to an executive, they ask to see the digital thread going from their concept to prototype to a production system. And, and then asking you, where did you break that digital thread? At what point did you get out of the model, go to a document to explain things, go back into a model again, et cetera? So, that's that concept of breaking the digital thread. Can we make that thread continuous from one level of abstraction to another, from one discipline, engineering discipline to another as well, without breaking that, that digital thread? That was a great kind of visual picture for, for me, taking a look at it. So, maybe we could open it up to the audience now and if you can come up to the microphone or we have a couple of microphones up there and maybe share any of your experiences and what's going on in your organization? Have you seen any, have you seen any challenges in terms of getting MBSC? Then I'll, I'll show you how to, how to get more information and then we'll open it up to, up to questions for the panel or anything else, so. Any, any experiences, challenges in your organizations? Oops.
Looks like it's on.
Oh, there you go.
Yes, it is.
Great.
So, I, I, we're, we're challenged at Sandia now with some of the tools and, and, and there is also learning that's going on in terms of how low do you go as a systems engineer before the component portion of, so we're in the midst of, of fighting some of the battles around model management and where the systems engineer leaves off and the component engineer. But I was also, you know, really involved in the tech ops, the, when the initiative kicked off and we spent a lot of energy and money as an Incosy entity on AP233 and this vision that the tools were going to be interoperable. And initially, some people were playing, but then when they found that other people weren't playing, they stopped playing. And, and I don't want to name companies, but how are we going to hold our, our vendors accountable for that? I mean, even step standards for putting one set of drawings from one CAD modeling tool, mechanical CAD modeling tool to another one, they don't follow the step, they don't share the schema. And so, you can't, I mean, is there anything that we can do to hold our vendors accountable for interoperability and for following something like the AP233?
Yeah, well, you know, let's open it up to questions. I don't want to constrain this, but any, any from the panel members, any, any discussion there?
Glad you brought that one up. Yeah, so there are, it's just natural for the tool vendors to, to try to hold on to their market. So, we have to drag them kicking and screaming into open standards. So, I know there's always like P-Des, you know, that's exactly what they are. So, it's a consortium of end users like ourselves to pay into that, trying to encourage tool vendors to, to go to open systems. At, at P and G, our dream long-term is that the data model is mine, you know, is ours. We own the data model, we own the, all the, you can bring your tools in and you can operate on my data model, but you do not get to store it in some proprietary format, forcing me to use your products and your products only. This is not a welcome thing for tool vendors. So, what we've seen is, is they try to invent, say, open standards that, just to slow the process, process down. I'll pick on one that, I'll pick on Rockwell in this case. They, they created something called ControlNet. And open standards, supposedly everybody could tap into it. Well, in the end of it, Rockwell was the only customer for that. And they eventually killed it because Ethernet overtook them. But that's the kind of thing, you're going to see that, VRML, I think, no, it wasn't VRML, it was another one, something similar to that where somebody comes up with their own, just trying to slow us down. And it's just, those of us that are end users are going to have to convince tool vendors that they can compete in a best-of-class environment as opposed to a monolithic tool supplier for all of your needs. And so, we think in the meantime, you know, in the interim, short term, we're going to have to live with multiple suppliers, but ultimately, or excuse me, with a single suppliers, but ultimately, we want to go to multiple suppliers.
Any other comments?
What would a tool vendor say?
There we go, some pressure.
So, you, you want to use the best drugs, this is what you say?
Yes, best-in-class, each drug, absolutely.
So, we're just coming back from a all-day discussion on similar topics, you know, from the model management breakout session. The, the answer is complex. There are very strong business incentives to stay close, every company, including Procter and Co., by the way. So, so it's, it's a combination of technology and market, market drivers. I think the market drivers are there, customer need to speak up more aggressive, for lack of a better term. But there is also some technologies shift that we are looking at strongly. So, if you take a look at prior standardization attempts, it was kind of boil the ocean approach when, you know, let's publish this 2,000-page document that standardized everything. And what's happening after that is that he, right after, every, everybody's comply and not comply. Everybody declare, I'm complying with the standards. When you go and look at the implementation, he complied with 70%, 80%. That specific tweak, he was not comfortable with, so he changed it. So, real integration cannot be done. So, the, the approach that IBM is taking, together with some significant players in the market, is try to think about it from a completely different way. Let's forget about data standardization. Let's take use cases. Let's go and go, take use cases that we think and our customers think that are valuable and let's develop together with our customers, minimal set of concepts, minimal set of terms, minimal set of vocabularies that will allow us to operationalize those use cases and, and build it in steps, not, not try to define, you know, taxonomy with 5,000 elements and, you know, 20,000 attributes, but let's build something with five types that can achieve enough as a first phase. And this is what, you know, part what, of what O S L C, Open Services for Life Cycle Collaboration is all about. It's trying to adopt the concept of the internet and the way the internet architect itself in the early days, things that all of us are doing today, seem natural, like sending email or open a webpage and browsing it from Firefox or my phone or my TV. All of those things are possible because someone puts some thinking on how we architect the basic primitives of the data. So, this is what O S L C is trying to do, just project it to the engineering domain. It's a different approach, still yet to be proven if successful in large scale. We have very good sign that it's starting to take off and we have more and more partners and clients and vendors that participate. And I encourage all of you to learn more about it and to, you know, join, join the train again.
Great. Any more comments from the panel? Harald, great.
For me, I'm a bit doubtful, just to rely now on O S L C, we're discussing introductivity for years and so, I think with some results, but not too much results, so therefore, I think it's a great technology, but I think it's also depending on the willingness of the tool vendors to, to open up their interfaces and whether this is a step or whether this O S L C, this doesn't really matter. But I think on the, on the other hand, I think what was mentioned before, the, the data models that we care on, on, on end user side more and more for our own methodology for what has to be applied and for the data we manage. This also gives some, some, some great asset to us in order to, to, to better approach the tool vendors and say, this is our problem and this, this needs to be supported and then, and I think with that, so over the time, it might change so that there's some, some much more pressure to, to, to say, okay, well, this is my, my, my overall problem and this, this need to be cut into pieces and then split to the different tools.
Okay, great. George, great, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, none of us, I, I don't want to spend any of my time finding out whether or not two pieces of software are compatible or can exchange data. I like to spend my time figuring out what I'm going to do with the data, assuming I can connect the two pieces of the software, right? And, I mean, even in just trying to pull over requirements spec into our S M L model, we learned a lot about how, you know, how that data is structured on one side, it's, you know, it's a reference, set of reference occurrences or requirements and how do I want to model that? Is that, you know, I'd rather spend my time thinking about, a little bit more about that than, ah, nuts, these two tools can't talk, right? Because there's Because there's nuances to that that are more important to me about reuse of the, of the engineering element. So I agree, I mean, I'd love it to be standards. I'd love to, as John often says, stand on the standards. Of course, if there's multiple of them, I don't know which one we stand on, but I'd rather spend my, my time and money there. And I think one thing that, I'm also president of the Michigan chapter. And one thing, our, we have a local M B S E working group, largely a sysml working group in our chapter. And one thing, one idea that we've been playing with was, I think the example was Open Modelica or something like that. One of, one of the websites had a, you know, a list of all the different, these different tool sets and which ones, you know, were compatible with, with the language, right? And what's that? Yeah, is it F M I? Okay, right. So, and again, not to pick a particular standard, but one thing that our, that some of the members of our working group thought about was, and it was, they were thinking about, you know, could the chapter put this together, a set of test suites that we, that as a chapter, we offer to run against any, any set of tools, right? And it's not definitive. We could, we could honestly get it wrong, right, in assessing it. But posting it, publishing it, we ran the sets, suites, here's what we found, here's what worked, here's what didn't. Making that public, as in the case of F M I, prove to drive some sort of response. I'm okay if the response is it's the wrong thing to do and people are vocal about it, but at least it's something, right? I think that might be an opportu, that might, an answer to the question I suppose. I mean, I think that might be something in our power to do, right?
Right, great.
And that could be at the chapter level or otherwise.
That's a great idea, that's, that's good too. I think, I think the, some of the goals that we have here too is to, to get ourselves out of the mud here in terms of thinking about how to link the data together as, as systems engineers and get to that level where we're spending most of our day doing that critical thinking, that decision-making we need to do at a higher level and not, you know, spending our day bogged down by transforming from one tool to another, one data set to another, one format to another as well. That's not necessarily productive work in terms of the critical thinking that we need to do as system engineers. Let me take, take a moment out, sorry, so that I get to this in terms of how to participate with the M B S E before we run out of, out of time. So three kind of aspects here too is go to the Wiki page, W W W O N G wiki dot org slash M B S E. It's easy to remember. I actually usually just use Google and Google the O N G Wiki M B S E and it gets you right there, right? The other part of it is within your working groups, all right? Ask the question, how, what kinds of modeling, what kind of digital engineering is associated with our working groups? Is there a task, is there an activity within your working group that could liaise on with the M B S A team or take it on yourself? But how are you getting into the digital world in your working groups as, as well? And identify how the, the folks within the M B S E core could help you out with that as well. So reach out to that. And in reaching out too, as you go through the Wiki pages, take a look at the challenge teams and the activities that are out there for, for some case studies and examples of work that's going on and see if that applies to that. Or volunteer, are there any case study work that you're doing that might be a good driver for some of the challenge problems that we have? And let us know and we'll add that on to the challenge problem with, list and, and work with you as well, right? So there's a, a few different areas there to, to engage. So I know that we're between, we're between you and dinner right now. So before you go off and you get your steak, let me, let me open up for questions, comments, experiences and go for it.
I'd like to comment on Amit's observation that we, as users, have to speak up to the tool vendors. We can speak up one by one to the, to our current suppliers and we will be very weak. It's only when we combine and speak as a group that we can influence the vendors in the right direction. We tried, tried doing that in step, it didn't work out. I'd like to urge you, all here, to speak up within O S L C. Make sure that your requirements are stated. Show that you care, because if you care, the tool vendors, they have to care. So maybe, this is a bit pathetic, but maybe we should not ask ourselves what Incos can do for us, but what we can do for, for Incos. I'm very sorry for that.
Good point. Good point.
How about follow-up to a point that was just made? And actually, the genesis of this goes back several decades.
By the way, could, could you identify yourself in your?
Yes, yes, I'm Charles Wasson. Specifically, what we're dealing with here are some organizational paradigms. If you look classically across many industries, especially involved with, say, proposals or whatever, it starts out with a very small team, perhaps some capture lead, a lead system engineer, maybe one or two others. And so depending on whether the organization has bought into the M B S E effort, if the lead system engineer is into it, then what happens is, is they're confronted becoming the one of doing the data entry, if you will, and they're in the engine room and not looking at the horizon. And so what we classically find in many organizations, because they're understaffed and in many cases, some of the younger generations believe they need to be leading projects and not doing data entry or learning the bottom-up journeymanship of the, of the profession itself, until we solve some of those problems, it's going to be, it's going to be even worse. So I'm just kind of curious about others' experiences and dealing with those as well too.
Panel members, any, any comments? How about mentoring? Are you, any of you doing any mentoring within your organization for the young engineers? Helping them through, break, break down to any of the barriers at all or is that one aspect of it? Yeah? Go ahead, shout, shout it out so the folks can hear you.
What are your companies doing about motivating the universities, particularly you guys in the Midwest, about teaching this stuff to students?
Yeah, so I, I guess we're, my, personally, I've, I reached out to adjunct work here locally at a, at a couple of universities as well to, to teach M B S E as, as well. So that's, and it's, and it's not ju, not just me. So I think there's a, an aspect of mentoring and then reaching out to the local community and not just universities actually too, high schools, et cetera, working with some of the challenge problems that are, some of the robotic challenge problems too, and helping them explain how modeling and CAD CAM and other M B E approaches work there too. So I know we're doing that in, in the aerospace industry, maybe others?
Beyond just direct effect on education programs, within John Deere, we've built a whole program of university collaboration, so funding actual research programs. For example, at Georgia Tech, they have, we're participating in a Center for Compact and Efficient Fluid Power, big multi-university consortium. And that included tutorials to all these industry drivers in that whole industry. What is systems engineering and why is it necessary to figure out how to integrate technology? And, but the direct funding of graduate students, of research projects, and that has actually morphed into some of the practical issues we just talked about, like interoperability. So for example, we're funding some work on O S L C adapters for off-the-shelf tools.
Also, are you, are you getting it working from a government funding perspective? We got a contract or customer research and development too. There's a lot of effort going into small business innovative research, spinoffs from universities who still liaise on with them too. So there's a lot of funding going into, at least there was, I'm not sure about the sequester at this point, but I know we are, we are investing in a lot of that, those areas too.
Well, you know, it would be rare for you to find a P and G person showing up just for the sake of showing up and speaking. There's always a motive, so it's always driven by something. Currently, we don't have enough system engineering capability to ask for system engineers, but we work with academia all the way, all the time about other disciplines that we care about. In my own case, Mechatronics. I'll go talk to universities about the value of Mechatronics and, and why the first principle physics and stuff they learn and the linear models they learn are important, how we use them in industry. And it's to encourage, and we do encourage, encourage the programs to, 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 to teach things that are going to be useful to us. And that is our motivation for going. So I'm hoping that I'll be doing that for systems engineering shortly. And I know Purdue is doing things that, that we do care about. Like they have S E programs that work across departments, that, that kind of activity we want to encourage.
So I know we're running over time here, but one last question and then we'll adjourn.
Get one last one in, all right. John Clark, I'm the founder and chair of the Incos Training Working Group. And one of my jobs is to train Incos in system engineering. And I, one of my challenges is I struggle with some terminology in, in this area. In other words, what is the difference between model-based systems engineering, model-driven engineering and model-based engineering? Okay, these are confusing. And I know Incos has a definition of model-based that uses the word support, okay? Not the word driven. There is a definite difference. In, in model-based, as I understand it, the model is a guide to the engineering of the system. It is not the driver, not the driver, okay? And what is the difference between a guide and a driver? Okay, you could help us all by having some better Incos definitions of these terms.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
That's great, good, good. All right, well, we have a round of applause for our, our panel members here. Thank you, thanks for your time, appreciate it. So I, I hope, hope this was useful to you and we'll continue with the journey. Take you, take care, good night, happy dinner.